Called to order the January sixth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. We have, uh, everybody there, see, let me. So, uh, our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance. And then after that, our sheriff, I'm gonna ask Sheriff Wilkie to come forward for our invocation. So if everyone please stand, if you're able, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, please have a seat.
Yesterday afternoon, I had the, the privilege and honor for being present for an honor walk for Colton Schell. And for those of you who may not be familiar, an honor walk is a patient's movement from a hospital room to the operating room in which their organs will be donated to other families. Colton Schell is the sixteen-year-old son of Captain Matthew Schell and his wife Lucy. And he was a bit of an icon at the sheriff's office. He was always smiling. He'd come in, he was bouncing around. He'd have his backpack. He'd always talk about the Special Olympics, or the next time he got to do something. And, um, he was a member of our sheriff's office family. The scripture that came to mind to me this morning, when I was considering what I would share today, comes from First Corinthians, chapter thirteen. And Paul writes to the Corinthians that three things remained following Christ's crucifixion and resurrection, and those three things were faith, hope, and love. The greatest of which was love. I cannot describe for you in words what occurred, or the grief that several of us witnessed from that family, nor would it be appropriate for me to try. But what I can tell you is that Colton's life, even in its final moments, lived out that scripture. The hope and the faith that his final acts while alive on this side of eternity was provided to families who only hours before didn't have that hope. The act of love, I can't begin to describe with words, but I can also tell you that there were several hundred people from Haywood County, not just the sheriff's office and police departments, but fire departments, people from various parts of our county administration, people who had known Colton and the Schell family, and were affected by his love and kindness, and just how it would persevere for anyone that was around him. And to see him interact with Matt and Lucy, uh, it was very clear that they were a loving and kind family, endeared to one another. And I have the faith and the hope that Colton is at peace, and families have faith and hope because of his final acts on this side of eternity. So my prayer this morning is not going to be just for the Schell family, but I'm grateful for the hope that he provided and the love and support that the county, that I have a great honor to be a sheriff of, showed up en masse, to the point that the administrators in the hospital said it was the largest showing for any honor walk they had seen. In fact, it was difficult to squeeze everyone into the hallway. And as he was wheeled past, I saw there wasn't a dry eye in the place. If only we could live a life like Colton. If only we could live with faith, hope, and love at every point in time in our lives. I would invite you to join me in prayer. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the time that we had Colton Schell. Thank you for his parents, Matt and Lucy, whose endearing love and display of kindness and willingness to give of themselves for their son, and in fact, their whole family. Lord, let those principles reflect in our own lives. Let us see what has been given. Let us see what has come out of great grief for that family, what amounts to hope, faith, and love for others. Make it so true in our lives and remind us, Father, that the people that we lead, the people that have elected us to lead have a great expectation that we do the same, and that our actions reflect. Our heart, we should always have faith, hope, and love. In the name of Jesus Christ that I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I had the pleasure of meeting Colton during the emergency that we had there at the sheriff's office. And he did, uh, to have everything, he challenges that he had in his life. He was, uh, you wouldn't know it by his attitude. That's something we can all emulate, I think. And, uh, and I'm glad he's giving other families hope for here. And then I know that we'll get to see him again one day. Uh, and I know his family's looking forward to that day. Okay. Our next order of business is public, are usually public hearings, but we do not have one today. And then next will be our public comment session. I do have one person sign up to speak. And I just want to say about public comment, we're having, Frank is updating our public comment, uh, policy, which is, will bring it up to date with the technology that we're now, uh, you know, our, our public comment doesn't, uh, really address ecomments and things like that. So he's gonna be working on that. But I will say, in the coming year, I am going to start sticking to our policy more closely. If you haven't signed up to speak, uh, I will not be asking if you want to speak after the signed up speakers have spoken. So, uh, so from now on, if you want to come to this meeting, and I know this is televised, please sign up before you speak, before the meeting begins. And then after the speakers that have signed up have spoken, we'll move on to our next, uh, order of business, which is usually constituent concerns. Please adhere to three minutes. People have criticized me for that, and I, uh, am, I apologize. I will start keeping the three minutes very close. And when I say, please finish up your comment, that means maybe one or two more sentences after you hear the signal. Uh, Amy or Haven will let you know when that is. And I will go over, once that we have gotten the public comments, uh, that Frank is, will be working on. Once we got those approved, I'm gonna stick to those very closely. And, um, our public comment session, we, we only have to have one a month, but we have two a month. So our board is very transparent, as Brandon said last time, and as I've said. And I know everyone here agrees with that. And I want to make sure that people can make their comments, but I want you to stay in the rules that ninety percent of our commenters do stay within. And, and like I say, uh, also, I wanted to say that Amy has placed the public comment policy online. I would appreciate if everybody would look at that, uh, if any of y'all maybe plan to do any public comments, uh, to please look at that policy, because we, we will be following that more closely. So the first person to sign up to speak today is Sherri Morgan, and I know Sherri always keeps to her comments to, to the proper way to do it. So Sherri Morgan from Waynesville. If you would, you have three minutes, Sherri. And thank you for signing up this morning. You always do. You follow our policy. Well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to, it's cold this morning, and I just wanted to go over just a couple of things. Uh, my husband and I have been volunteering, uh, in Haywood, Madison, and Yancey Counties. And we've been facilitating, uh, when we say tiny homes, the ones that we have brought in are to code. They have bathrooms and a little kitchenette. And people have really enjoyed getting those. And I just want to clarify that, uh, these are available here in Haywood County, too. I spoke to Kevin earlier. And what, what is not allowed are buildings that don't have the basic, the basic guidelines on the building code. But, um, I've been working with Commissioner Terry Ramey, and we've been working through many sources to facilitate campers and tiny homes to our area. The buildings that are being offered through many sources, they can be insulated. We have taken the tiny homes located, that we located at Madison and Yanni, Yancey County, because Haywood County, we felt like, had stated no tiny homes allowed because they don't comply with the North Carolina Code. After that last meeting on the second, I spoke to David Riddinger with the North Carolina Fire Marshal's Office about the building code. And he said he could approve a tiny home in one day if basic safety is in place, such as what heat sources intended to be used, and gas and smoke detectors. And the buildings could be brought to code on the lot. Well, those, those buildings, if, uh, if they, if they go ahead, we've got twelve hundred people that have had some sort of damage in Haywood County. And if they want one of these buildings, they could set them and then be able to use them as they're doing their work, if they can't live in the house when the construction is going on. So I also talked to David Riddinger about the county commissioner chair using that North Carolina Emergency Act, one sixty-six A, to bypass state building code, and he agreed it could be used. So that's something I spoke with, and with other county commissioner chairs, and they said they would keep that in their back pocket, that they were gonna go ahead and set the homes, and then, um, you know, they'd have that to fall back on. And also that stays in at Bill three eighty-two, which would allow county commissioners to act in emergency like Hurricane Helene and bypass state building code to allow citizens to temporarily, temporarily use these tiny homes. Uh, that got approved. So winter is just getting started, and we're gonna have below freezing temperatures for a few months. So why, why not go ahead and offer these and let the citizens know? It was in the newspaper, this, uh, this, uh, it's immediate release, North Carolina Office. We've got that in the paper. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri. Okay. I'll close the public comment session. Sherri's the only one that signed up to speak, and I'll move on to constituent concerns. And... Does anyone have any constituent concerns? Brandon, you got anything? Okay. Okay. Do you have something?
No, I, I don't have anything other than what I've contacted the county manager about. I had some road issues and clean out issues, and he, he got with the DOT, and they've responded very well. So thank you for that.
Okay. I do want to note that the next commissioner's meeting will be Tuesday, January twenty-first, as the county offices will be closed that Monday, which is the third Monday, in observance of MLK Day. And of course, Martin Luther King Day, uh, is always on the third Monday, which is when our meetings are. So we always have it on the following Tuesday for that. And, uh, and I'll just say, Sherri, I appreciate y'all doing that. I think tiny homes are great, as long as they're built to code. I used to, uh, I think it's kinda interesting how on tiny homes, they're able to make great use of space, if you will, in, in maybe where they put the beds, and how they may, maybe get up into the lofts and things like that. So I know for a while it was a big craze, and unfortunately, they've used the word tiny homes in some of these YouTube videos, and they're really not tiny homes. They're talking about storage buildings. So tiny homes have always been legal, as long as you build them to code. And so, uh, and we'll be looking into that, Sherri, and we'll make sure. The good thing is, I feel like, and when the sheriff tried to find people living in tents, he couldn't find anybody other than the people that wanted to be in tents. Uh, but we have no flood victims, as far as I know, that do not want to be in the tent, in the tent, because we have made provisions, especially the churches and the nonprofits that, uh, that we work with every day. So, uh, just want to give a shout out to all those churches and nonprofits that, that take part in that and everything. And I appreciate Sherri, your efforts in, in our county and other counties, so. Okay. Also, our next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations. And before I have Travis come back, I just wanted to give an update that Haywood County, the town of Clyde, the town of Canton citizens, who received a substantial damage letter, should take note of the following important update, okay? The extension for the appeal deadline, the new deadline, you now have two hundred and seventy days from the original letter to appeal the determination of substantial damage to your structure. This ninety-day extension from the initial timeframe, so you're giving you an extra ninety days. The reason for the extension is because, uh, it's been granted to accommodate delays in insurance claims and property appraisals caused by the widespread damage from Hurricane Helene. The steps to appeal. One, uh, you need a repair cost estimate. Obtain an estimate from a North Carolina licensed contractor for the cost repairs. And I know I had a home substantially damaged, and I got one from, of course, I'm not gonna get any help from FEMA because it's not my home. It's a rental home, but, but he did give me an estimate on what that is, so it's fairly easy to get. So you need to get that, the estimate from a licensed contractor. The estimate must include labor and materials needed to restore the structure to its pre-flood condition. And no insurance company estimates are not acceptable for permitting or appeal, okay? To appeal the value of the home or structure, you must provide an appraisal from a North Carolina licensed appraiser. And then for questions or further assistance regarding the extension or appeal process, contact Haywood County Development Services Office. I believe that number is four five two six six eight two. I have that memorized, because I call it all the time. So it's eight two eight four five two six six eight two. And this extension ensures that citizens will have sufficient time to gather the necessary documentation and comply with local flood ordinances. You know, I was talking to my wife yesterday, and one of the problems that we have is we have, uh, our trades were already busy, you know, we're already covered up, and then this happens, and there's just not enough people to do all the work that needs to be done. And we're finding that out really fast. That was a problem before we had the flood, and now that we've had the flood, it's all about building, which is what, uh, we had a shortage in to begin with. So, um, so I'm sure the extension has to do, probably a lot to do with that, too. So, okay. Travis, are you, you're, oh, there you are. Sorry. Okay. Travis, you wanna give us an update, a lean update? Sheriff, you can give us one if you have anything, if you, if you like after Travis.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, we'll try to be a little bit more brief. Last time, I, I gave you a lot, a lot of information, and a lot of the information I have today is the same information. So I'm gonna try to keep it a little bit more brief. Uh, just a quick reminder, uh, the local Helene hotline, county hotline, uh, is still open, eight two eight three five six twenty twenty. Uh, that's eight to five, Monday through Friday still. Um, our big push still is hazard mitigation. Uh, Cody Grassi is still working on that. Our office is still working on that. Reminder to folks that that's acquisition. Uh, those are folks that are located in flood zones, that have had repetitive losses, um, that are looking for an option to, to get rid of their property, to, uh, to mitigate, uh, something happening in the future. Uh, there's also elevation. That's a part of hazard mitigation. That's where you can raise your home above floodwater levels. There are certain criteria that homes have to, to meet. The home has to be eligible to be elevated. It's gotta be structurally sound, uh, items of that nature. Reconstruction is a part of hazard mitigation. That's moving or rebuilding your home safely outside the flood zone, still located on your piece of property. So if you have a, a piece of property that's, uh, in a flood zone, but you have another area of that same piece of property that's out of the flood zone, uh, that, uh, you can successfully, uh, move and or rebuild, uh, another home in that area. That's also a part of hazard mitigation. And then the, the new one, uh, that we're dealing with is landslide assistance. It's a brand-new program. FEMA released it back in July in their policy guide. Nobody has really ever done it before. And as I spoke to at the last meeting, it's, we're kinda pioneering, uh, what that program looks like, not only for North Carolina, uh, but as far as the rest of the United States as well. Again, it's not really been done anywhere in this particular program, or in, within hazard mitigation. So there's lots of questions that are being asked, um, from homeowners to us. And we're in turn taking those questions to the state, uh, who are then working with their partners, uh, with FEMA to figure out how this program's gonna flow. Um, I was talking earlier, um, we're kind of ahead of everybody else in the area as far as hazard mitigation goes, uh, which puts us in a good spot because we're able to ask these questions specifically about this landslide assistance program. Where hopefully we get most of the issues ironed out in the front as they're building this program out, and giving us the direction and rules and guidelines to follow with it. Um, so that is a, a big thing. There's a lot of landslides here in the county that's affected folks. And, um, as Commissioner Best and I were talking earlier, uh, there's not a real good way to fix those outside of this program. So that's really important. Um, if folks are thinking about or considering any part of hazard mitigation, uh, I would encourage them, um, to reach out to us. Cody Grassi is in our office. He can be reached at eight two eight four seven six zero two eight five. Um, the email address to, uh, to reach him with questions on mitigation is mitigation@haywoodcountync.gov. Uh, we have printed, um, paper copy applications at our office at one forty-one Hemlock Street in Waynesville. Um, and you can also go to readyhaywood.com. Uh, there are links on there for all the information, as well as being able to download those applications. Sorry, my phone timed out, and I gotta pull my notes back up. Specific updates to hazard mitigation as of Friday. We had thirty-one applications for acquisition, one for reconstruction, and ten for landslide assistance. We have over sixty interested in the program that we've been in contact with, or they have been in contact with us, um, as far as working through some more information for those. We do have a couple key deadlines with hazard mitigation we'd like to mention. Right now, uh, we're looking at the first of April, uh, to accept those applications. And a reminder, too, to folks, is that the program is a hundred percent voluntary. Uh, you can enter it in today, and you can get down to the last day where they're getting ready to offer you a check, uh, for your property, and you can pull out at that last minute. No harm, no foul. Again, it's a hundred percent voluntary, um, and available for those folks for some assistance. Couple of other FEMA deadlines. Uh, they bumped out disaster unemployment assistance to March twenty-ninth. And they have also bumped out FEMA individual assistance, which, uh, I think we discussed at our last meeting. Curious if they were gonna bump it, and they did. Uh, that's been bumped out to February sixth as well. Housing updates. I wish I had more to share on that. Um, there's a lot of stuff that is being worked on here in the county, trying to, uh, trying to solve the, that, um, issues for folks. It does seem like it's dragging out longer than it should. But we're hearing at least some positive news, and hopefully some movement, uh, coming from Raleigh and from FEMA. Again, I don't want to hang my hat on hope, but, uh, that's, that's what I've got right now, is hope that we get that moving quicker. The last update I had from them was that there were five units, um, temporary units or mobile homes that have been placed here in Haywood County, um, for folks. And I think the need was still around forty-five total families that qualified for that program. I think some of the hurdles that they're still running into is, um, more, um, is issues still finding available lots that meet the requirements, um, to get those units on. That's, we've had quite a few that came forward and said, yes, we'd be willing, but, um, then there's inspections part, and sewer water hookups and all that stuff. And, um, just in a normal day in business, it's, that's, takes time, and it's taking time here as well. So that's, um, again, hopefully there's more forward progress. We were talking about it at the end of last week, hopeful of some stuff that was coming down the pipe and would speed that process up more for folks. So I'll take any questions at this point.
How many, did you say have been placed so far?
Uh, according to the numbers I received this morning, there were five.
Five already been placed?
And that could be campers, or I don't know if there's... And that could be campers or I don't know if there's, I've seen a full single wide yet, but I do know that the majority of those were campers.
So you, you talked about an elevate, to elevate the homes, is that a program that they're doing?
Yeah, the elevation is part of hazard mitigation. Back during oh-four, there was quite a bit of elevation done in Clyde, raising homes up out of the flood, floodwaters, flood zone. Those, those houses, a lot of them did get impacted this time, so elevation, if folks are interested in it, is an option. You go to the beach, when we say elevation, it's, it's houses on stilts, you know, if you go to the beach and, and you see the houses up on the stilts, that's, that's what elevation is. And again, it, it's very specific because the house has to be structurally sound enough to be able to be elevated and raised, so just, it's a very specific program for that.
And that's through FEMA?
Yes, it's through, through the state, through FEMA, so yes.
So they'll, so, okay. Yeah, I often wondered like down in Clyde and some of those areas if they could do the stilts, which, you know, if it's legal on the coast, it should be here. I would think most of the soils are sandy like they are at the coast of Clyde or Canton, if you will. Within the landslide, is that a new insurance that they're now providing or is that just for this event?
The landslide assistance is part of the hazard mitigation grant program. It's the same, the same grant program, there's just four different avenues to it now, there used to be just the three, but now there's four and they've added the landslide assistance. And that's for folks that have had a home damaged or there is a landslide behind a home that has the potential to damage a home and/or, you know, damage somebody else's home on down the mountain. So those are, that's the new program that they added, that FEMA added back during, back in July when they changed their policy guide. And again, we're, we're pioneering what that looks like for them.
Do you think if, I know there were some homes lost in Maggie Valley that were maybe second homes, would those qualify?
There are guidelines for those, I would encourage anybody, if they had something like that, to at least contact Cody and make sure that we, that they, the homeowner fully understands their options, cause there are some specific guidelines in there and I'm not, I'm not an expert and I don't wanna tell somebody wrong, Cody is our expert. So if they, anybody that has something like that, please reach out, at least get your name on the list if there's a chance for some assistance, don't, don't miss out on it and leave it on the table.
And to contact Cody, they would call Development Services or?
No, Cody, Cody has a county cellphone, Cody does work part-time, so just wanna mention that. If he doesn't answer, leave him a voicemail and he does get back to folks and his phone number's eight two eight four seven six zero two eight five. And again, that email that goes to him is mitigation@haywoodcountync.gov.
Say that again, that four seven six, what was that?
Zero two eight five.
And that's Cody Grassi?
Yep, and mitigation@haywoodcountync.gov. Do have a, a positive note that's not Helene related, but the state has selected a contractor for Tropical Storm Fred mitigation projects, those acquisitions that we were doing as part of Fred back in, a few years ago. The state has selected the contractor and there will be a private meeting between that contractor and those homeowners later this month, basically as a project kickoff for them to make introductions and ask questions and, and get that timeline for what it looks like for those folks that are in Tropical Storm Fred mitigation.
What, have they received a letter to that effect?
Cody, Cody has reached out to them and let them know, yep, and let them know when the meeting is and, and made sure everybody knew that needed to be there, to be there.
Cause that was a big question I think we all were getting.
That's one I had wrote down, matter of fact, it was on Fred to see when that, what that timeline looked like. I've had two, two phone calls in the past week asking about it, so that is on the buyout, is that right?
That, those are, most of those are buyouts, I'm, I can't remember the exact figures, but pretty much everybody we had in Fred was a buyout, there were a couple maybe that were interested in elevation, but the bulk of those were buyouts.
You said that meeting will be this week or next week?
Think it's next week, not looking at the calendar. January twenty-second should be their date. And again, that's a, a private meeting for those folks.
Travis, can you, and you might not know, and if you don't, that's okay, but you know, there's, there's been a lot of, and I, I don't, I certainly don't wanna add anything to the rumor mill, but there has been some rumors that there was, I guess, a retired mobile home park in the area that was gonna be brought back and allowed some single wides, I guess, through FEMA to be placed there. I guess my frustration is, and it, it really is frustration, is I've dealt directly with FEMA and provided them some available mobile home lots, PIN numbers of lots, and then also they have, I've sent them names of owners and they've, they've messaged, they've talked to these owners and then there's, there's, there's no further conversation with them. So the, the property owners are, they don't know what's coming next or if they've been, you know, marked off the list of, so there is a lack of communication and then of course, you know, it's the rumor mill of all the things that are available. So do you know if that, I, I know, I think it's out of the county and probably within the limits of a municipality, so I don't wanna say too much, but, cause I don't wanna pass it on to somebody else's plate, but do you know if they're moving forward with that, if we've got, identified a site where we could put twenty or thirty single wides?
I know that there were some things being worked on and they were trying to figure out the logistics of them. Brian, do you have any comment on that?
I'm, I'm not familiar, last few days with any changes. It resulted, or really, it's being delayed because the infrastructure's not adequate for water sewer lines for part of that, that, that park. So our contact through FEMA, Jeremy Slinger, and I've traded some emails and texts and he thinks there may be a path forward, but he wanted to talk with me to see, I'm, I'm not sure exactly where it resides, but it was all delayed because of infrastructure, inadequate water and sewer hookups.
Yeah, so one of the owners that had been contact, one of the folks that is an owner of mine, I manage some property, not this property, but she had a piece of property and FEMA, this actually happened with two incidences, FEMA went out, saw the property, met with them and then there's no further contact. And so it's, I mean, I really wanna voice the, I really wanna say that I'm frustrated that we're ninety days in and we're waiting on FEMA to start checking off some boxes. And at some point, we're, we're gonna have to ask them to step it up a little bit and if there's, if there is not a, if there's not something that's ready-made, then we're gonna have to figure out how to make it ready. So, and we need to do that two weeks ago, a month ago, two months ago, I mean, posthaste, we need to get with it. So, I, I know it sounds like I'm fussing, I'm not fussing at any of us, I'm just saying, we need to, we need to put some pressure where pressure will get a result.
So, have you talked to Mr. Slinger?
He's the new guy that's, yeah, I've talked to him and I've-
And he can't tell you why?
You know, I, again, I've supplied PIN numbers, I've supplied names of the owners, I've followed back up with the owners and said, you know, has FEMA been in touch with you? And the response from both of them was the same, yeah, they called us, but we haven't heard anything back. And so it, it's, it's not that their, their property's not, can't be utilized, it's that we've got to find properties that can be utilized. So it's not about these individuals, it's about if we have to, if we can't have a trailer park with thirty or forty units on it, then we need to find places to place individually thirty or forty units. And I understand that's cumbersome and a lot of work, but just sitting here doing nothing is, is not accomplishing anything.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Commissioner Best. Also, the, the communication, sounds like there's a breakdown there, even if a property's not okay to, to be used, then, then they need to get back to them and let them know that and tell them why, you know, so we can't move forward instead of just leaving it be. So I, I share the frustration with you a hundred percent.
Have you heard anything else about the property that Jim Harley Francis has out there, the trailer park?
That's the one I was referencing, yeah. That, that one was the, the largest site, I think, in, in the county and that, that was the one we were, were hoping would, would work.
Well, most of them that's got that kinda access to that many trailers has already got mobile homes on them, you know, it's gonna be hard to find that. Seems like they would come in and maybe build a park, you know, for them or something. Be cheaper than waiting ninety days or a hundred days.
It, it needs to move quicker, that's, that's for sure. And Travis did mention, we, we have some help from the state, I think some of the actions taken last week by the state and, and I've had contact with someone that helped work through housing for Tropical Storm Fred, much smaller scale when we look back on it, but we had contact with him and Garen provided some addresses yes, or Friday, so hopefully if, if the housing program with FEMA's not working, we've also shifted and we're working with the state, so hopefully we gain some traction this week.
I mean, I hate to state the obvious, but even if you look back at Tropical Storm Fred, which occurred now almost three years, four years ago, we're just now getting the buyouts done? I mean, obviously the house was damaged the day after it happened as it is today and so, you know, we, I've said since I've been on the board that the wheels of progress turn slow, but I mean, the wheels are rusting up, this is ridiculous. I mean, it's, you know, these people, here's what it comes down to for me, and I know I'm sounding very frustrating because it's a very frustrating thing, but what comes, what it comes down to is these people's lives are on hold. And these are primary residences and they are not able to move forward, there's no resolution. And I, we have to, we're, we're gonna have to raise a flag somewhere. I mean, we've got to knock on somebody's door often enough that they just say, please go take care of this and make Haywood County be quiet for a little while.
You know, while we're beating this horse, I'll, I'll go ahead and pound on it a little bit. Tropical Storm, Hurricane Matthew hit in eastern North Carolina, what's that, five, six years ago? There's still people down there waiting to get some relief. And the person that was over a certain agency in North Carolina got fired here about a month ago. There was some house cleaning went on in a certain agency in North Carolina, so.
And I'll go back to-
I'm, I'll, I'll just say I'm frustrated as well and I, I've been frustrated for a long time. You know, and I'll say it again after Tropical Storm Fred, yeah.
October sixteen?
October, yeah, twenty sixteen, that's eight years ago. And I, and I hear it at state meetings, I hear commissioners like you that live in these areas where that hit and, and you talk about frustrate, eight years of it. So, but you know, we, we've gotten this country, right now, we, we've got situations in the country where we have so much red tape. I know I've said this a few times and I've actually got some fan mail from this. I don't think anybody here is not conservation minded, but no one here wants to see an endangered species or anything like that go extinct. There are ways to mitigate situations, but when you place a elk toe muzzle and a mossy mouthed bat's life in front of a person, there's something wrong with the system. I'm not, I'm not wanting to go ahead and wipe out an endangered species, there's ways to protect those things, but when you, when you, when you get to the point to where as a society, you, you're at that, at that point, this is a big problem. I'm frustrated, I, I've said it here before, after Tropical Storm Fred, about situations like this and.
But I also wanna say, going back to Tropical Storm Fred, we were allocated some, some money and we were able to, again, and I'm not saying that this is a great solution, but we were able to, to set up some campers and we were able to handle the logistics of that ourselves as a county, correct?
We were sort of forced to, at that time FEMA didn't turn on the direct housing program for Tropical Storm Fred and you'll remember that the county had to shoulder the non-congregate sheltering at Lake Junalauska for what seemed like six years, I'm not sure exactly how long, and then the individuals that we, we were able to house, the county handled that and even the case management.
So my, my point is that we were able, we were able to do it.
Yes.
We were able to figure out a way to make it work and, and even though those ways are not always ideal, we were able to provide some sort of relief to these individuals. And it's frustrating to see that, that government above us, state and federal, are not able to facilitate those things. And our, the frustration of the community is, is that our, our hands are tied and we can do it, but we can't fund it. And you have to be able to figure out a way to pay for the things that you do. And so we are capable of fixing it, but we are not capable of funding it without some support and we've, we've got to have one or the other.
That goes back to what we asked for initially and that was for some direct funding.
Yes.
If we get some direct funding, we can fix it.
We can fix it.
We just need the money, so.
You know, Commissioner Rogers, to your point and Commissioner Best's point, none of us here were guilty of not speaking up on behalf of Haywood County. When we had state and federal politicians come here, I know it was an election year and whether they were doing just photo ops or what, that's, that's on them, but we were here advocating and lobbying for direct funding for the situations that we're talking, all of us did.
Yes. And I've written, I've written letters, emails directly to our, our federal representatives and said, you've got, you've got to start letting it flow down our way, we've got to start having some money so we can do something with it or you're gonna have to do it, you know, meaning them. And, and I've had, it was interesting, only one of the offices reached back out. So we, we've just got to start rattling the cage, I guess, until we get some results.
One of the things that concerns me a little bit about that, if we've still got two hundred and nine people, I think it's the last number I heard, wasn't it, in mot, or families in motels, would it not have been cheaper for FEMA to, to build a place than it would be to keep extending the deadlines on these motels and stuff with that many family members in motels and way, more than that, even living with other families, their family members and then not counting all the ones that's went in these campers and, and stuff too. To me, it just appears that it would be cheaper from a start to have them have built a place to put FEMA trailers or something than it would to keep paying all this money out, cause when the vouchers ever run out, these people still gonna have the same needs.
I think it's just a gross example of inaction. I mean, it's sitting on somebody's desk somewhere and it's, it's literally a signature, somebody's got to sign off on it to start bringing it up.
Yeah, there's a difference in moving slow and sitting still.
That's right.
You know, and it seems like that's where we're at, you know, I know that, that government moves slow, but the frustration is with that, but it, it's more so when, when nothing's been done, so.
And I realize that we are, and I, I wanna stress that again about Haywood County has worked very, very hard, there is not one, I, I mean, we all have, I guess, a weak link somewhere, but there is not one thing I can point a finger at that I think we've failed to do or dropped the ball on. I, I really feel like this is coming from above us and I feel like that we have to, you know, we all wanna get along and we all wanna work with other agencies, but you know, it, it's time to call out some people, we've got to have some relief, it's just that simple.
Sorry Travis, you got to hear all this, but.
He said twice, I'm gonna make it brief, so I'm sorry.
Y'all just didn't want me to-
I just, I tell you what, Ms. Best, I, we just wind you up and let you go every week. What you said needed to be said.
No, and I, I will tell you, talking with my other counterparts in other counties, the frustration is, is just as strong in other places as well, so. I wish it moved faster, I wished I knew the magic button to go find or the-
Oh, I know.
That one person that needs to sign off to make it move and let's get this behind us and take care of people. I wish I knew where that was at, or I'd go punch it through the floor somewhere. But, you know, my staff, county staff, administration, y'all, everybody been super supportive in getting through this and everybody is trying to take care of people, which is what we're here to do. The, I can't speak, I can't say enough for the nonprofits out there, the churches, the faith-based, all those folks that are doing really good work and taking care of people and have really stepped up because without them, we would be in a totally different place right now. So just want to make that be heard, that everything that they're doing is very much appreciated.
Where would we be if we had not had those volunteers and nonprofits and faith-based communities that had not come together? And that can be a logistical nightmare when you receive all of those donations and how do you hold them and how do you distribute them and what do you do with them when your volunteers need to go back to work? So I definitely, we're not saying that enough, or I'm not, is I really do appreciate the efforts that are being made in the community and that is not taken lightly and it is not being overlooked. But government needs to do their part.
Travis, another question I did have. I know you said there were five, maybe six of the homes, temporary homes that have been placed. Has any of them been placed on the flood properties, actual property that the home was sitting on that got flooded?
I don't have the exact detail, Brian. Do you know the answer to that one?
Do you know, Garen? Do you want to come up? I was curious about that myself, if you'd had any, even had any application for these temporary homes that the state reapproved or had cut back some of the regulations on.
Come join the fire, Garen.
I am aware of a handful of houses that have been permitted on the property that were flooded. Now, as Brian said, we have had contact very recently, last Friday, with the state about properties. And staff called a number of the people who we did substantial damage for to see if they needed a home. We talked to at least seven families who said that they would take one on the property while they work on their house, and we submitted that to the state on Friday, I guess.
And clarify what type of home that is?
Those will be, those are an RV type, a travel trailer.
Okay.
But you've not had any of these storage building type things?
We've not had a single affidavit that was approved or not one's come through.
It's come through. And you guys handle Maggie, Clyde, Canton, not Waynesville, but yeah.
Yes.
And I know of a guy in Waynesville who got a camper donated to him to live in while he rebuilds his house, which I think is a great idea, you know, to be able to live on your property and rebuild your house. He's a builder, he works for a builder and he's able to get their crews to come in on the weekends and tear his house down and build it back, so.
We, there's been some donated RVs that you'll see.
Yep.
And they're on properties. And we're aware of those and some were permitted. And most of the time they come back to us because they need the power turned on for them. So we'll set up a temporary pole to run power to those. But it's been few and far between where we've had applications.
It just seems it's been such a big issue to not even, people not even doing it, you know? I mean, so...
I talked to a lady on Friday who, her and her husband, they have four children, and they would like to have a mobile home set while they work on their home. Just like with the extension that you described.
Yep.
They've not received anything on their claims on insurance and they are staying in a home with 13 people right now. So we're trying to work with the state to get them a home on the property so that they could, when they start working on their house, they'll be able to stay there at the property.
And their house was in a flood?
Yes.
Flood area? Okay, so their mobile home will be too, I guess. Or maybe they can get it up high enough where it won't be, but...
Yeah, we can, it's easier to do a travel trailer in those flood hazards.
Yeah, that's true.
But when you're talking about six people living in one, maybe we've got to put two out there.
That's not even fun for a weekend, is it?
Yeah. Well, it sounds like you guys are, you know, I mean, you guys are talking to the people that have the big needs and everything. So, okay, I appreciate that. I wondered about that. So it's so far nothing. Okay.
Just let me say a thing. I know for a fact that Garen, his staff's been over backwards to help people. And I've heard good stories that, you know, we're trying to help people here. And I know there's a lot of people try to divide and start all kinds of stuff, but you know, I've heard people brag about how well that your staff has tried to accommodate people and, you know, it's between a rock and a hard place. And, you know, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you, when I called, that you're there, Garen. So, okay. Anybody else have any questions for Garen or Travis? Okay. Did you have anything to share Sheriff? Did you want to? I thought while we were talking about it.
We really don't have an update.
Okay.
There's nothing new to report. I hesitate to use the term "normal," but we are getting closer to that, however you define it. But things seem to be going very well in terms of post-lean. I would like to continue to remind folks that if they know of anyone that needs shelter, please do not hesitate to call us right away. I want to keep sending that message out there. Call our communications center. Nobody's going to get in trouble if they call 911 and need help. If they're out in the cold, if they're living in a tent, if they're somewhere where they do not want to be and their lives are in jeopardy, or they need a place to stay or need shelter, we will find a way. So I just want to reiterate that message.
Okay.
That was it?
Okay.
Any questions?
And as always, you have our support as well on the comments you just made. If I need help, call.
Appreciate you following up on all the people that were supposed to be in tents that weren't in tents that you could find. So...
Right.
I only know of one person living in a tent in the county that I know of, and they were, choose to do that. And they claimed they were flood victims, but they weren't.
Yes.
And when you look at the situation and find the facts about it, it's a little bit nefarious, if you will. So it's, there's some stuff there that's, that was said, it was one way and it was totally different. So it wasn't even a flood property.
Well, it's good to remind folks that we do everything at the sheriff's office based on facts.
That's right.
Not what somebody puts on social media, not rumors, not things that are floating out there. We investigate all of these things, but it's the facts upon which we act. And sadly, the facts are usually substantially different than what is first reported. So, but we are fully committed to investigating every potential complaint, every potential report of someone who needs our assistance, and we will get to the facts and do what the law requires and go above and beyond when we have the opportunity and resources to do that.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And appreciate you guys. I just wanted, I was just thinking, I guess social media come about around 2007, 2008's when they started using it. And I was commissioner in 2004 when we had the floods. We had to put up a lot of this crap, I guess is the best word I can say without saying the other word I want to use. And we got things done and things got taken care of as quickly as they could. And there wasn't rumors going around because you basically talked to people about the facts and you didn't make stuff up and put it online just to make it sound good and make money off of it, get clicks or whatever. So it's really a shame, and I think people will be held accountable in the afterlife for what, the damage that they've done through this stuff. So I really believe that because it's not, it's not helping people. I know that, that's for sure. I wanted to give you all some facts. I'm a surveyor and just to let you all know some of the river flood levels, and I thought this might be pertinent. We did an elevation certificate in Clyde, I mean, in Bethel for Bethel Baptist Church was helping a fellow in a mobile home and he had to know. So we shot the high flood mark and then we had, so FEMA establishes a 100-year flood level, okay? I'm just gonna call, it's called the BFE, but I'm just gonna call it, which is the base flood elevation. But it's the 100-year flood mark is what they predict, you know, and that's all you can do is predict that it's going to flood to this level. So we want you to build a foot above it, okay? So in Bethel, there was a mobile home right above jukebox, right at jukebox junction, just to give you all an idea where it was. And that mobile home, the flood level, the flood mark was about eight inches below the 100-year flood level, okay? So it's about eight inches below the 100-year flood level. We went on down to Canton and Riverside Farms, Riverside Feed and Seed, I believe that's what they call it there, on the bank of the river, right there in your, well, it's a landmark. So that was three feet above, the flood mark was three feet above the 100-year flood mark, three feet above in Canton. So you can kind of see what happened is, it's like the tributaries below Bethel were really, a lot of rainfall hit, went. We went on down to Clyde, there's the B Street Apartments in Clyde, we did some work there. That's near Angie's Dance Studio. It's kind of directly across from the Clyde Fire Department on the other, between the road, between the fire department and the river is where those apartments are. The 100-year flood, the flood mark, the high flood mark was four feet above the 100-year flood. So as Cody was saying, those homes that were built the way they were supposed to in Clyde in '04, basically if they built above, a foot above, they got three feet of water, which Jennifer can attest to, into their homes. So even if, even though they did build where they were supposed to, they still got impacted. And this is to show how extreme this flood was, four feet, four feet, okay? So about a mile down the river, on Hider Mountain Road, I did a survey for a fellow and shot his floor level. And his floor level was a foot and four inches above, and this was an old house, above the 100-year flood mark. So you think, okay, he's gonna be okay. Well, the 100-year flood mark was, the flood mark was almost, it was 5.8 feet, which was like five feet and 10 inches. We measure in tenths of a foot, so we don't measure in inches as surveyors, but, so five feet and 10 inches above the 100-year flood mark, almost six feet above. So he had five feet of water in his house. And that's about a mile below Clyde. So you, I haven't been down to Riverside to compare any of those, but you can see how the water, the tributaries in the middle and north end of the county must have been where a lot of the water was coming down because the river wasn't rising consistently down. It was, as the further you went down, it kept rising. Which a lot of people would think, well, that's the way, well, that makes sense. Well, no, it doesn't because the 100-year flood mark should be the same consistently all the way down. And it wasn't. The water was really coming, falling, I think, in the middle, in the north end of the county. So now the flip side in Waynesville, on Sulfur Springs Road, I just did one last week, and it was, it was on Sulfur Springs Road, which is about halfway between Frog Level and Eagles Nest Road, okay, kind of in that area, Sulfur Springs. And that's along Richland Creek. And it was about four inches, or, yeah, it was about four inches above the 100-year flood mark, okay, right there. So that was about, that was about right, okay? If you build a foot above, then you would have been okay. And then around Wendy's, Wendy's, right behind Wendy's, there's a bunch of homes in there along Richland Creek. And it was about seven tenths below the 100-year flood mark. The high water mark was about, when I say seven tenths, that's about eight inches below the 100-year flood mark. So Waynesville, although it was devastating in Waynesville, it wasn't as devastating as it was in Canton and Clyde. And further down Riverside, I know, I haven't shot the elevation, but my son-in-law's family owns a Davis trailer, I think it's called Riverside Trailers down there. And that's right before you get to the truck stop on 209, it's along the river. And they had never gotten flood waters into their shop in both Fred and Francis and Ivan, but during this one, they had four feet of water in their shop. And it had never even got close to the shop in the other storm. So I'm, I can't wait to get down there and shoot that elevation sometime and see how high above the 100-year flood mark it was. So I just want to give you all an idea of how extreme this water was this time. And you could say 500-year flood, 1,000-year flood. It was just really high. It was just really high water, especially in the north end of the county. And that's why our, that's why our I-40 got washed out. And I don't know when we'll ever see that again. Probably shouldn't say that, but it was, it was pretty extreme this time. So it's the, it's the biggest I've ever seen, you know, doing these, doing this type work, if you will. So I felt like I was a little bit of an update, just to give you all an idea of what, how deep it was and how bad it was, because it was. It was extremely bad. And unfortunately, we have social media to make up stuff that we shouldn't have to deal with. But in '04, we didn't have to deal with a lot of this nonsense. We were basically able to keep the facts and really get people help. And I really, you know, people did get bought out. And that's why Clyde, there wasn't as many people affected in Clyde was because a lot of those homes had been bought out and there wasn't any homes down there anymore. So, but anyway, I know we need to move on. But I thought that was pretty pertinent information. So, yeah, okay. Okay, our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda. And I don't have anything. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about those?
On the meeting for the second, a couple of little things that I think was missed on the minutes is on that, at the 209 mark on the video. I think he forgot to put that sheriff spoke. And then he spoke right before Mark did. That was at the 2.09 mark on the video. You asked the sheriff if he wanted to speak and he spoke, and then you asked Mark if he wanted to speak.
Under public comment?
No, it was in the consent agenda.
I mean in the minutes?
I mean constituent concerns.
On the December 2nd?
Yes, sir.
Who was it that spoke?
Sheriff. Kevin asked if sheriff had anything to say and then he asked if State Rep Mark Pless had anything to say.
Mark, yeah, Mark.
And sheriff spoke right before Mark did. The second time he spoke. Huh?
He's in there on page 438.
He spoke right before Mark spoke. He spoke before the prior and then he spoke right before Pless.
Okay, but Mark Pless is in here, right?
Yes, sir.
You're just saying that she, they missed the sheriff?
Yes, sir. You asked Bill if he had anything to say and then you asked Mark, and both of them come up and spoke.
Thank you for putting your mic on. Sorry.
We can review the tape. I know that the sheriff was asked to follow up after speaking with a lady who had spoken during public comment. And I had put a telecized follow-up after, I think during constituent concerns, when you asked him to follow up with her, I put the follow-up there. But we can go back and review the video and see if there was more.
Yeah, you asked him during the constituent's concern, you asked him if he had anything he wanted to say. And then you, that's right before Mark came up.
I think what I hear Amy saying is that it's in there. Is that right, Amy? It's just in a different location?
I believe so, but I can go back and double check the video before we approve these.
And he spoke right before the prior, but then he spoke again.
Commissioner Amy, is your question concerning the order of the way it's recorded, or do you think there's an error in what was recorded?
I just thought that that was missed. And that was my opinion of it. I thought it was missed.
It's the order of the speaking?
Because he got up and spoke about this, same stuff Kevin's always talking about. And when, in that constituent part, the concerns.
Okay, well, oh, me at the December...
Well, I guess I'm asking, could we go ahead and approve the minutes pending getting the order of speaking?
get, getting the order of speaking corrected or verified? Or may, we can just put it off till next meeting, I guess.
We'll omit the December 2nd, 2024 minutes. So let me just say, yeah, I'm going to lay that there so I don't sign it. So I will say, can, all right. Okay, so that, so Tommy's going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda except for item one. We will not approve the December 2nd, 2024 meetings until next meeting to review, to make sure that that addition's made, okay? Does that, does that sound good, Amy and David? Okay.
I'll say.
Second, or Brandon?
I'll make that motion that the chairman spoke here. We, we'll just do that next meeting. Table it to the next, table it to the next, table that item till the next meeting.
Appreciate you seeing that, okay? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved with that exception. Okay, then a regular agenda, we just have one item, uh, is request approval of a budget amendment, debt service $119,425 to appropriate fund balance for the payoff amount for Zoe cardiac monitors that was budgeted in fiscal year '24 to pay off invoice was not received in fiscal year '24. And go ahead, Christian.
Good morning.
They need to be quicker, don't they, if they want to get paid?
I know, I know, right. Um, yeah, we purchased these monitors and FY '21, the intent was to finance them at 0% for three years. They ran it for five instead, so that, that's why that happened. So we are going to, we had these funds budgeted last year, and we're just requesting those funds back out of fund balance to pay off that invoice.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that? Heart monitors, that sounds like a, cardiac monitors, that's, yeah, pretty important, okay.
Making motion to approve item one of the regular agenda.
Okay, Terry seconds it. So we got any other discussion on that? Okay, okay, good. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Christian. Okay, that concludes our agenda. Um, anybody have any other comments?
No, I got one question, uh, maybe should have addressed it in constituent concerns. I know I spoke to Brian about it earlier, but just to put it out there in a public meeting. On the roadside pickup from, uh, you know, where we're supposed, people are supposed to bring it up to the right-of-way, and we, we've got contractors picking it up. I've had a lot of constituents call about wanting to know when the deadline was to complete that process and when the process is going to move to the next phase. I, I know we had Roger from SDR here a couple of meetings ago, but just, uh, do you have any, uh, anything to put out there publicly about deadlines for folks who are trying to clean up their homes or bring stuff to the roadside? Is there a deadline?
We haven't, uh, we haven't set that deadline. I imagine we'll work with SDR to see about, as the debris continues to be picked up, how many more passes we'll need, you know? We, we can't expect everybody to move at one time. I, I expect this to go on until the, to at least mid-spring, but we'll work with Roger and get an update, and, and we'll try to notice the deadline 60 or 90 days out, uh, probably. As we learned during Fred, you do have to establish a deadline, or we would pick up debris for the next 10 years. So we, we'll have something that, that works with the people's ability, but we're also working with some outside nonprofit groups to come in in the spring and help with that public or private property debris removal. So we, we have a lot of things still yet to do in debris before we establish a, a deadline.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Just another, I hate to put you on the spot, but I know we had heard about I-40 back before Christmas. Are any updates on I-40?
Not a word, no, sir.
I, I have kind of a
I can update you.
update about I-40. So I was contacted, I manage properties, and I was contacted by a gentleman looking for housing, a rental property, who was coming in, he's an engineer on the I-40 project and needs to be here in January. So insider tip, they must be getting ready to start some work, yeah. I said you can't get here soon enough. And I did not rent him anything, just for the record.
I can update you a little bit about that, not publicly, but, yeah, probably, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll start to see some, we'll start to see some improvement down there quickly.
I've got, I've got a couple of requests. I'll just go ahead and make it publicly. Maybe in the next upcoming meetings, maybe not the next meeting, but whenever we can work it into the agenda, I'd like to have a, maybe a public update on, on the, uh, what we're going to do with the, uh, emergency watershed protection and maybe the cleanup aspect like we did with Fred, which is still ongoing. I, I knew we were trying to wrap that up. When hell ain't hit. Again, I, I'm getting back to the frustration point of how slow things work. But maybe, maybe in a future meeting, uh, we could cover that, cover that ground.
We, we have SDR and their partners, Debris Tech, uh, doing the, um, almost the analysis on, on, uh, emergency stream debris pickup. Hopefully, we have something in the next week or so, uh, and it won't be the full set of streams. Uh, they're, they're going to work in smaller groups so they can start moving. So hopefully, in the next two weeks, we can have an update on the timeline for stream debris removal, emergency debris removal. And then EWP will be months down the road, uh, for, for, like, like they said, it's not emergency watershed protection, but eventual watershed protection, so. But our, our focus is, is under the emergency stream removal to get as much as we possibly can, so.
One of the good things about that that has happened this time that was not part of Tropical Storm Fred is we're not having to wait on engineering, correct?
In some cases, correct.
So, but that, that goes back to what I was saying earlier, is if enough people, enough of us complain and, and rattle the cage, and so we've got to keep moving forward, things, little things like that that delay it unnecessarily can be removed from the equation, and maybe we can move faster. And more efficiently. Yes.
There's a difference, and, and I think this, the, the folks involved at the state level, Fred was, uh, a learning experience for a hurricane in the mountains. And, uh, the, the river channels don't function the same way as they do down east when a hurricane hits. And, and we have gotten some greater flexibility, uh, from, from the, the state on, on how we can approach this one, so. They, they've learned some things that we did too.
I think it would also be appropriate, and again, I'm, I'm shifting gears here toward the end of the meeting, but, uh, you know, we, we had a project that kind of consumed us before these storms hit, and it was called the New Jail Project, and I would like a little update on that.
I said, oh, yeah, there's that.
Maybe we could have a, a little public refresher on where we are. I know the project's coming along, but, you know, maybe we could incorporate that into.
Bryant also mentioned that we're coming into budget season last week when I talked to him, so.
The most wonderful time of the year, right?
Uh, Bryant, can we have, uh, I would like to get a report from Haywood Waterways. They were doing some debris pickup by hand on some of the streams, and I'd like for them to come and tell us what they're doing and what streams they're doing. One of the things, one of the things that you see this time of year, because the vegetation's died down, is along the, along the rivers and the streams, you see all the debris that's just stuck in trees and, and everything, and it, I wish I had the health to go in there, the health to go in there and just start cleaning up some around my properties and stuff, but, um, I would like to hear what they're doing and maybe how, how far that they've, they've gotten, what they need, might need. And that way you'll get, I know the mountaineer did a story on it, but I feel like if they do something here, that'll kind of put out the word a little bit.
Make sure to invite Preston.
Yeah, and, because I, what I'd love to do is, it, you know, in the future, if we had volunteer groups come to the county, that that be something that they could maybe do, and maybe Haywood Waterways can, can do that, you know, can, I don't know, but I just, it's just a lot of stuff, you know, just hung up in the rivers and stuff, so. But if you could, contact their new director, I think they have a new director, and he seems to really be doing a great job. Not that they haven't always, but he does seem to be taking care of a, a need that's, it's just an eyesore, and it needs to be gotten out of the streams and everything. I appreciate all they're doing.
I got a couple of things. I'd, I'd like to thank sheriff for, uh, what he said about my little buddy there a while ago, because I'm really going to miss that guy. I had more fun with him every, every time I was somewhere and I ran into him. He used to laugh, we giggle, we had a big time, and I appreciate you saying good stuff about him, because we think, but we'll be thinking about him for many years down the road, I guarantee you. And also, I'd like to thank Tommy again, I know I did the other day, but since then, I went to, uh, up and saw what y'all were doing last weekend, and I appreciate that. And, uh, you helped a lot of people. You helped a lot of people and kept them warm during this, and the weather that's come, and you helped a whole lot of it. And also, I wanted to say that, uh, uh, these people talking about, uh, our, Travis actually talking about, you know, if the state can get campers and stuff, if, if, I'm sure some of these people that's getting campers for us would be glad to help out on some of that if, if it was necessary. I'm sure they'll get some campers in here, because they'd be getting them in overnight, and they, they've really been doing a good job, and, uh.
Who, who's they, Terry?
These different organizations, like Tommy's organization, like the
What's, what's it called?
What's the one that, that, yeah, what's Chris is the, the, uh, uh, that other organization. Chris brings them in from the campers. I can't remember exactly the name of it, but they brought in tons of them. And, uh, that Sam Byers, he's bringing in a bunch. And, uh, I can get the names of them, but they're, they're helping everybody quickly if, if that would help out anything. I'd be glad to get you in touch with them.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn, everybody be safe.